Welcome, everyone, to the City Council, Eugene City Council meeting. Welcome to those who are here tonight in attendance and to people at home. Our first item at every council meeting is the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person who wants to speak has three minutes. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments, and the red light indicates the end of three minutes. And first, we have three people signed up currently. And, yes, Pat does know us, I mean, Councilor Farr doesn't know what to do with that. First person up is Eugene Drixx, followed by Matt Denberg.
You're up.
So much for polishing my notes. Boy. Hello, Eugene. I'm so glad to be here. My name is Drixx, and I live on High Street, and I'm proud to do that, too. Oh, I'm glad to be here, and I'm here with a gift. And I bring eccentric things here that take no space and time, because how else do you present a gift to a city? And through microphones and the Internet and cameras. So this one I'm really excited about, and I hope I present it in a good way. A lot of times, it's new words, new concepts, like you, John, knows. Oh, the heck with all the things. I was going to use the word "oh" in every sentence, but, you know, it works when you're driving your car, and when you get here, it just isn't flowing. But we have a town here, just a wonderful town, and it's surrounded with just incredible people who even thank me for doing this. And I'm only being a citizen. Hey, I just show up and suit up and play democracy, because that's what it's for. And you people, although people put you on a pedestal, you're just there so you can sit down, but you're citizens, too. You're one of us. This is how it works. And it isn't any more eloquent than this, although a lot of times, it gets more frustrated, because people don't know they can come here before they get frustrated and just share the events. One thing I do notice is that you can name things all you want, but then people are going to find the easiest words to use. They're going to find the shortest shortcuts to go across your lawn, or across a park or a street and just wear out the grass. And so one of the things that always got me is the, it used to be the Otzen Bridge, and now it's the Dave and Mrs. Frommeyer Bridge.
Lynn.
Lynn. I knew somebody'd help. God, love them. They're just great people. They've done so much wonderfulness for Oregon, but that's just an awful lot to say. Let's take that bridge and go there. So after a lot of thinking, I thought it would be really convenient to call it the "from" bridge, because it makes you think, like all of Eugene. It's not the "to" bridge, it's the "from" bridge. And then people are involved with what you're talking about, and then there's conversation. The bridge will get you from there, once you get to there. And that was that one. The other one that I am very happy with is we have a new building in town that I got to go and really visit during the ceremony for our slain officer, Chris. And, boy, that was another moment to bring our community together, and it was just beautiful. And that building is beautiful, and it's going to be here for a long time. And I think that building is more than Eugene's building. I think it's Oregon's building. I think it's a real center of wonderful things that have not happened yet and will be happening. So I'd like to thank everyone for building it and having it, and the University of Oregon for being there, and I'd like to thank Matthew Knight for our beautiful, new arena. Use it, it's yours. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up is Matt Denberg, followed by Steve Merz.
Hello, my name is Matt Denberg. I'm a resident of South Eugene, Ward Five. I'm here representing the Disciples of Dirt Mountain Bike Club tonight. Wanted to thank the council for their action two weeks ago to move forward with the purchase of the Misen property, 193 acres in the ridge line. Also, to reiterate our thanks for the property, the purchase of the Arley property, the second purchase acquisition of the southern portion of the Arley Park property. It's ironic, we've supported that park, the initial park purchase, as well as the second one. It's ironic to find that the purchase of that park is actually throwing a monkey wrench into plans that the mountain bike and the city had to develop trails in that park. The Disciples of Dirt were meeting with the City Eugene Parks and Open Space staff to move forward with the possibility of a community-initiated parks development process, where the mountain bike club was willing to take over the construction and maintenance of three to five miles of trails that had been approved on the Arley master plan, and talk about building additional trails that would be approved through future developments. With the purchase of this second piece of parkland, Parks and Open Space is reconsidering the configuration of the Frisbee Golf Course specifically, and I think just the overall uses overall. That process will require a master park, master plan revision for the Arley Park plan. And, of course, we were told there's not funding anywhere in the near future, possibly three to five years or more, for that plan. So one of the councillors made an analogy a couple weeks ago in the newspaper article as a reference to the car in the garage. And you buy a brand-new car, but you have to leave it in the garage, because you can't afford to put gas in it. Well, we're willing to put the gas in the car, maintain the car, replace the brakes, do everything we can to keep that car on the road and running. We just need the registration to be paid, I guess you would say, for council. Small, little amount. The parks had looked at approximately half million dollars to construct the trails in the park. We would be looking on taking on that half million dollars, plus, as a volunteer project, corporate commitments, you know, relationships that we've built, to take that on, saving the city that money, providing the trails today or tomorrow, you know, within a year or so, ideally, for everybody to use, as opposed to waiting for funding that, you know, is a long way off, to begin the process, to revise that plan, to then, one day, find funding to build those trails. So we're here, we're ready to go, and we just, we hope city council can direct park staff to prioritize funding to revise that master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up is Steve Merz.
I'm Steve Merz. I'm with Disciples of Dirt Mountain Bike Club also. I'm a resident of South Eugene, 01. I just want to reiterate what Matt said. We are a large group of people that are willing and able to go out there and help work on the Arley property. Right now, we're building relationships with Willamillean, with the BLM. They've come out and seen work that we can do. They're taking us seriously. They know that we have the effort and the drive at this point to improve their parklands. What we don't want to lose is this opportunity with Eugene to help improve the parklands here. You know, it's a great opportunity that we all have. We have a lot of land. It just seems just silly to have parkland, open space, that the community can use, enjoy, recreate on, but instead, it's just going to sit fallow at this point, with no users there, with who knows what's going to go on back there, if nobody's back there using it. I mean, I think it's been shown time and time again, when you have people using parklands, it's, they stay in better shape than if nobody is using it. So what we're doing is we're giving the City of Eugene the great opportunity to use our resources to go in there. And for that to be held up by something as, and I know, it's never just simple, but as simple as amending a master plan for property that we already own, it seems quite a shame. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Close the public hearing, and thank you all for coming tonight. Just say to Drixx that I liked your comment about play democracy, but I actually think you practice democracy. And I also want to say thank you for those who came on the parks and mountain bike issue. Thank you very much for coming, and I'll certainly be circling around and having some conversations about it, so, and follow up on it.
The lights aren't working.
Oh, the lights aren't working. There we go. All the lights are working. Okay, everybody wait. All right, now, so, Councilor Zelenka.
You guys, I'm interested in what you have to say. Do you have some more detail that you can provide us? And that would be good. I think we'd like to hear more about what your proposal is. It's always good to have volunteers step up to the plate. They can do amazing things, and they have done in the city. So interested in what you have to say and how it can be compatible with other uses in the park. And Drixx, I don't know if I'm comforted or disturbed that you actually write notes before you talk.
Okay, I don't see anyone else with a cue, so we'll head on into the next item on our agenda, but thank you, again, thank you all very, very much. Sorry, we don't do that. Consent calendar is next, and Council President, you want to move the consent calendar?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seeing no discussion, would you please vote on the consent calendar? Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes.
Andrea voted even though she's no.
Oh, how do we do that with Andrea?
Come on with that, Stephen.
Whoa. Seven. Yes, it's no-nos. It goes to Andrea. Councilor Ortiz. All right, next item, the ratification of the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission budget. City Manager, do you have any comments you want to make about that?
You know, I can just do a brief intro, if you'd like.
Sure, that'd be great.
Be helpful. And this item is to request ratification of the proposed FY-12 MWMC budget and capital improvement program by the City of Eugene. On April 8th, the MWMC approved the FY-12 Regional Wastewater Program Budget and CIP. And consistent with the intergovernmental agreement, the budget and CIP needs to be ratified by the governing bodies of Eugene, Springfield, and Lake County prior to final adoption. And earlier this month, both Springfield City Council and the Lane County Board of Commissioners unanimously approved the FY-12 budget.
Thank you very much. Council President.
I move to ratify the FY-12 MWMC budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councilor Farr.
Thank you. Just a question regarding that budget. I caught a snippet of what Councilor Brown said in the, in the items portion of the previous meeting regarding a 4 percent change in the, in the assessment for stormwater. Is that a part of this motion?
No stormwater, but...
The, I'm sorry, the MWMC.
Oh, no, wastewater.
Yeah, the 4 percent increase is on the regional wastewater budget, so it's the wastewater user fee increase of 4 percent.
And I wasn't taking my notes veracurly. I heard the number $83. What is that? 83 cents?
The typical bill's going up 83 cents a month.
83 cents a month, okay. And I'm not going to oppose, I'm by any means, but I just wanted to kind of position that against a few years ago, when we put a 1 percent utility fee on the, on the ballot, a 1 percent, which equated to about that same amount per month for a family, a little, little bit more, I think it was about a dollar a month. And it failed by 70 to 30 percent for, for about the same amount of money, which went through the ballot. So it's, you know, it's not without a certain amount, without thought that we do add 83 cents onto somebody's bill, because years ago, we decided that we weren't going to add a dollar onto people's utility bills for low-income housing. So it's just a thought thrown out there as to how we place our priorities and how we decide when people vote on something and when it just goes through a consent calendar or a debateless action by the council. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote on this. Would you please vote? We'll try for seven. Good, seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you, thank you. All right, next item up is the approval of minutes, findings, and recommendations from the hearing official on adoption of an ordinance levying assessments. City Manager, do you want to say anything more about that?
Probably just two quick items. One is, when we get to the ordinance part, in order for it to take immediate effect and then not accrue additional interest, a two-thirds majority of the council is needed in order to take effect immediately. And then, you might remember on last time, you asked us to amend the resolution for the low-income subsidy program, and just FYI, an additional four property owners qualified for and will receive low-income subsidies as a result of that amendment, so.
Council President.
First, I would like an explanation. Is this an appropriate place of the assessments on undeveloped property? Just for the public, I did get the explanation from legal counsel, but I've, there've been questions about why or if people have to pay the assessment on undeveloped property, and why it's different for small areas, small plots than for large ones. So would you just give a brief...
And I'll just, before Mark talks, I will just say that he did send out an email today with a full description of that.
I have it now. I want this for the public.
I know, I'm just, the rest of council know.
Thank you. And also Catherine told me. Thanks.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, I was going to read from that email, because as I said in that email, the code is very complex, so to get it, to get it square, I want to read from it, so there's no question about the interpretation. But the issue is on residentially-owned property. Vacant parcels less than one-half acre in size and fully developed with a single-family dwelling and residential zoning are assessed for the actual frontage of budding improvements, except no parcel shall be assessed less than 50 feet or more than 100 feet. So that's for properties that are less than a half an acre, for, that are vacant. For vacant parcels that are one-half acre or larger, they're not assessed at the time of the street improvement, but they're assessed when the development of the property occurs. And those are for properties that are one-half acre or larger. And then there's a group in between. Partially-developed parcels of one-half acre or larger with a single-family dwelling or a duplex in a low-density residential zone and having more than 100 feet of frontage, a budding improvement shall be assessed for the 100 feet of frontage at the time of the improvement, and the remaining frontage shall be delayed until the property is further developed. So that's the three instances of where acre and acreage and the size of the property affect where the assessment is paid at the time of construction, or at the completion of construction, or when the property further develops.
Thank you. And the further explanation I got was that for the reason for that is a person who's living on a large acreage, or just paid for one home, and if it's a separate plot, it's presumed that it's intended to be developed. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
If you have one house on a large acreage, it's considered as just the home site, which is why that would be assessed like any other home site.
Right, if it's larger than a half acre, and it's partially developed, and there's more than 100 feet of frontage.
Okay. Catherine, could you add something?
Certainly. I went back and pulled the minutes. Councilor Taylor had a couple follow-up questions about the why, so I pulled the minutes of the 2001, when this change was made. Prior to 2001, all properties were assessed, and it was due at the time of completion of construction. There wasn't a differentiation between lot size, it just, the assessment was due, vacant, regardless of the size. Then, in response to some concerns that were made, they made the differences between half acre versus smaller than half acre and larger than half acre. And so the larger-than-half acre that has a home on it, it's presumed to be a large homestead, and so they were, they limited the assessment to the 100 feet. And so those people that have these larger homesteads that aren't planning on developing them didn't have to pay until they, for the, above 100 feet, until they were actually, until they actually went to further develop it. So those changes that were made to make the change between, the difference between half acre, less-than-half acre, and more-than-half acre were designed to assist these homeowners that are, just have these larger acres that have a home on them. So was that the additional?
Yes. Thank you. I would add, until or unless it's developed, they wouldn't pay. They might never develop.
It's, yes. It's deferred until they develop.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, put it on there.
I move to approve the March 23rd, 2011 minutes findings and recommendations of the hearings official.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Don't see any questions here, so please vote on that one. And that is six in favor and one in opposition. And then you wanted to go on to the other motion?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5045, an ordinance levying assessments for paving and constructing curbs, sidewalks, medians, streetlights, stormwater drainage, and water-quality facilities on Crest Drive from Blatton Road to Lincoln Street, Story Boulevard from Crest Drive to Lorraine Highway, and Friendly Street from Lorraine Highway to 28th Avenue, and providing an immediate effective date.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councilor Clark.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain that I'll be voting no on this as well, just to maintain consistency with previous things I've said on this project.
Okay, Councilor Farr.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions regarding this motion, and then a couple of draft statements. I'm looking at the $207,000 worth of low-income subsidy. Can somebody talk about that a little bit?
Certainly. So for all of the assessment projects dating back to, I think it was 1991, where the council established a low-income subsidy program for street assessments, property owners that met certain guidelines had the opportunity to have a portion of their assessment subsidized by the city, so that became a city cost. And so we did this on the most, three most recent projects, this project Crest Drive, Maple Elmira, and Chad Drive. And then for this particular project, as the city manager mentioned, we had a second opportunity because of the ongoing recession for additional, an additional application period for the low-income subsidies. And so that total is all of the 28 folks that qualified for that program.
So the, the $207,000 of the subsidy, it's not actually forgiven, it's paid, but it, where does, who pays it?
The city pays that cost. It's out of a separate fund.
So can I translate that to be the people who fund the city pay that? So people in Bethel, people in the street bridge area, pay, share the cost of that, rather than the people who live there actually paying it?
That's... Well, they would share in that cost, too.
I mean, that's a loaded question. Obviously, that's the case. So the, it seems like a large amount, $107,000. Why is it so large? You've explained it a little bit, there was an extended period for application for the low-income subsidy, which didn't happen, for instance, with Elmira Road. But why is it so much larger than Elmira Road?
I don't know that the, the, I don't think that the, I don't know the absolute difference between this project and Elmira Road. I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't think it's that different.
Yeah, the, interestingly, it seems to me that it is, that some different regulations are in process, or in the extended application period, allowed for things to go a little bit larger than, than they may have gone. I, you know, I have a little bit of an issue with it, that, you know, the, the property owners up there live in that particular part of town. They got the improvements, and, and I'm assuming that at some point, the benefit of those improvements will add to the cost, the value of their property, much like it did with the people on Elmira Road. But I'm, I have a little bit of a problem with people all over Eugene paying for it. So I did vote yes on the initial, on the last motion, because I can't really fault the hearing official, based on the information that the hearing official was looking at. But I'm going to vote no on this one, because I just don't really feel good about subsidizing the cost of those improvements in that area. Nothing, no reflection on the work of the city by any means. Just, I just don't feel good about the fact that people all over Eugene are paying for the improvements on Crest Drive.
Councilor Taylor.
Well, if we, if we were really just, we would pay for the total cost of the improvements, because people all over Eugene can use the roads, and we all pay all the time for things that people all over Eugene use. Parks and streets and everything that government does. We don't just pay for the part that we use. And the reason this was changed, the reason that the time was extended was particularly because of some people who not only had low income, but now have no income. And so at the, last year, maybe two years ago, they had a decent income, but when you have no income, you've, ought to qualify for low income. And I think the change made it a little more just. Thank you.
Councilor Farr.
You can?
Yeah, you pushed it.
Thank you. Just, just one, one comment on income. Now, one of the ways of really measuring the income of a particular area, and one of the best ways I found throughout my years with Fluthland County and other ways, is take a look at the, the free and reduced lunch programs in the elementary schools that are served by that particular area, and let's look at, for instance, Crest versus Fairfield, which is adjacent to Elmira Road. Let's look at the percentage of kids in those areas that are free and reduced lunch, and it's significantly different. And I realize that Crest is closing, so, you know, it's not an issue, but, but really, to subsidize areas of higher income from areas of lower income, that's something that really kind of bugs me a little bit, so.
Councilor Clark.
Yeah. Councilor Pryor has pointed out an interesting fact to me, and I was going to let my previous statement stand as a formality, because I figured, you know, I would probably be the only dissenter again on this. But I guess I want to say that the reason I'm voting no is because the initial formation of the LID had a sufficient number of the residents sign a petition to remonstrate in order to, to put, to postpone the work at the, the original formation. And I said at the time that if they got the signatures, I'd vote against it, and so I did. And so in order to maintain consistency, I'll do that. But near as I can understand it, this particular piece needs a two-thirds majority to pass, does it not? Or is it simple majority?
It, it doesn't need it to pass. It needs it for the immediate effective date. So it, it still passes, it won't have an immediate effective date.
Okay, thank you very much.
And that would, if it doesn't have an immediate effective date, then we accrue 30 more days of interest. That's the issue.
Which is distributed out for the... As part of the overall assessment.
No, that just becomes more of a city cost.
So technically speaking, though, in order to get the math right here, if you have two councillors or more voting no, you won't make that threshold. Do I have that right?
Correct.
Am I math right on that? Okay, thanks.
Yes. Councilor Zelenka.
So, Mark, maybe helpful, it would be helpful for me, anyway, to explain the low-income subsidy. My understanding is that it's an absolute threshold of income level, regardless of where you live in the city, that if you are below that level, you qualify?
That's correct.
So if you live in the Fairmont neighborhood, or the Crest neighborhood, or in Bethel, if you, if you have an income below this level, you can get this, this subsidy, which everybody in the city pays for in this particular, for this particular type of project?
That's correct.
Like in Elmira, Elmira, there were people who met that threshold, and they got the low-income subsidy, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's an absolute threshold. It's not relative to where they live?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there, and is there a budget for this? Or is it just, we just cover it out of the cost of the project?
It's a, it's a separate fund that's, that's not specific to any particular project.
And maybe, Mr. City Manager, so if, if we don't pass this with an immediate effective date, and the interest accrues, what would the average assessment go up? How much would it cost them to have this?
My understanding is that additional accrued interest actually isn't against the assessment, but it's paid for by the, the city. Is that clear?
That's correct.
So the assessment is not, doesn't change? Right, so...
Assessment doesn't change, but the city's cost goes up.
City's cost goes up by 30 days' worth of interest, and I don't know what that amount is.
Mark, ballpark?
I think that's about, would be about $5,000. So it would be $5,000 more for us to pass this on a 6-2 vote, okay?
We only have seven.
Our seven. Five to two. So we need six votes in order to pass that, right? Okay. Well, if you guys want to cause the city to have $5,000 more, that's, I guess, up to you.
Councilor Pryor.
Thank you. Yeah, it's part of how, how it works. As I mentioned at the previous meeting, this isn't something that I want to make a habit out of. It's, this is not, you know, we did, we went through a process, we created this thing, we should probably stick with our original process, but I'm willing to go along with this one, just because of the extraordinary circumstances we find ourselves in. So I will vote for this one, but I didn't want that to indicate that it's somehow a trend that I'm wanting to create. This is, this would be a one-time thing for me, but I'm willing to support it this time.
Councilor Farr.
Thank you. Thank you, the fund that, that we're discussing, of which 207,000 is being taken out of, how large is that fund currently?
This will probably come close to tapping it out.
So this will take about the whole fund, which will leave nothing left in the fund, no matter who qualifies or who doesn't. Okay, another question is regarding the assessment of, I mean, the assessed value of housing on Crest Drive versus, let's say, Hope Loop, would you say there's a little bit of a difference there?
I'm not...
No, I know. The housing, the housing in South Eugene is a lot more expensive than the housing in the, in the Fairfield, the Fairfield area of Bethel. So, you know, it's, once again, I am really, I don't mind being the second no vote on this one, because it really galls me that rich people are getting the, people who live in rich neighborhoods are getting subsidized by people who live in poor neighborhoods, is a problem for me.
Well, I guess, at the risk of keeping this conversation going on, I will say that because you live in a particular neighborhood does not mean you're rich, this is based on income, no matter where you live. So with that, Counselor Brown?
Yeah, contrary to popular belief, not everybody that lives in South Eugene is a millionaire and has a McMansion, there's lots of people that are hurting there too. And what we've heard is that the Elmira and Crest projects, there were lots of people that qualified because of their low income level. It doesn't matter which part of the town you live in, if you have a low income level, you qualify, and it comes out of this fund, which we've all pitched money into, and I just really kind of hate to hear this, dividing the town up, north, south, east, west, like we're all different neighborhoods, all at war with each other, you know, it's just, I think it's counterproductive to what we're trying to do, which is improve all the streets around, and not send people to the poorhouse to do so.
All right, let's vote on this, please vote. So it is five in support and two in opposition, so it passes, but we do not have immediate action on it. All right, and with that, we finish the business of the day. Thank you all.